This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Iba Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Echols.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Councilman Reed is absent today. We do have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. Councilman Harris will lead the invocation this morning. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us praise the heavenly Father. We thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to be here together to see about the business of your city. We ask that you would give us wisdom, give us guidance, give us courage to make those decisions that are in the interest of the city. We ask you to lead and guide your officials here that they may be forever mindful of you. Bless everyone here today. Keep them under your guidance and we will continue to give you all praise. It is blessed we are in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Our prayers are rooted in the faith of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session, council meeting, and community development committee meeting on March 27th. Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of March 23rd through the 29th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
And Mayor, proclamation?
First of all, is Wayne Rowe here, Mr. Rowe? Come on up, please, sir. Our proclamation, whereas Wayne Rowe has contributed to the quality of life for the citizens of the city of Gadsden where his commitment to excellence has been an invaluable resource to the city of Gadsden from April 1st, 1982 through March 31st, 2012 during a 30-year tenure as Chief Executive Officer of Quality of Life Health Services, Inc. The city of Gadsden recognizes the profound financial impact of our community by Wayne Rowe for bringing $200 million in funding to the health services program of Quality of Life Health Services during his 30-year tenure. Wayne Rowe has been a leader and strong supporter of the local healthcare system in Gadsden and surrounding areas. Wayne Rowe has led by example and has shown all who know him or have worked with him to be a pillar of strength, sound judgment, and reason. Wayne Rowe has been a behind-the-scenes force in the improved access to healthcare in our community. Therefore, I, Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the city of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim April 3rd, 2012, is Wayne Rowe Day in recognition for his 30 years of service as Chief Executive Officer of Quality of Life Health Services. I encourage all citizens of Gadsden on this day to recognize the significant achievements of Wayne Rowe in the area of healthcare.
Congratulations.
I'm gonna let Wayne say a few words, but I do want to say, I've known him a long time and when I was on the Community Development Board, and I'm sure he's gonna give you a few figures, give him a few figures and the number of places, because it's amazing what's out there that's sort of like a well-kept secret sometimes.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and to the Honorable Council. It certainly is a wonderful day for me to have reached this milestone in my life of 30 years serving as CEO for Quality of Life Health Services. And I certainly want to say to my staff and Board of Directors, Judge Jenkins is here, that none of this could not have been achieved without the support and having good people working with you. But I've also acknowledged the fact that over the years, this city has supported us in many, many ways. Back in the early days when we were starting out, this city contributed funding to Quality of Life Health Services so that it could do its work. And I hope we've served you well. We have provided healthcare services to, we have at any time in our registry, over 100,000 patients enrolled in our company. And right now, we are operating out of 10 counties. We have 19 locations. We started out when I started 30 years ago. I had one full-time site at the Roberta Watts Center on Tuscaloosa Avenue, Councilman Avery's district, and we had a part-time operation in East Gadsden at the J.W. Stewart site in Councilman Harris district. And now we have six locations in Gadsden alone. We are awaiting the completion of our mobile unit for the city of Gadsden school system that will provide additional support and care for our children. And it's just, I could say so much, there are so many things, and, but I was talking earlier that I hope we've made an impact on not only the healthcare of all the citizens of Gadsden, Etowah County, and the other counties that we work in, but we've made an economic impact in this area. We employ over 300 people right now. And we have served with a budget of over $20 million annually in this area. And most of it is here in Etowah and Gads. And we just want to say thank you, I want to say thank you, in terms of the recognition and proclamation, but I want to thank you also for the support, Mayor, that you've given us over the years in this city. Thank you so much. I want my staff to stand. Could I have my staff to stand? These are my leadership staff. I've got one police officer, Councilman Avery, that fellow there, he's Chief Officer of our company for security.
Police officer.
Yes, that is really amazing when you find out all the people who have served in all the locations around North Alabama. Excuse me. Can't see without my eyes here. The next proclamation I have is for Patricia Falcon. She is? Yeah, I think she is. Whereas preventing child abuse depends upon community-oriented programs and services that involve a collaboration of professionals to prevent further victimization of children. Child physical and sexual abuse continues to occur when community members are unaware of how to appropriately report child abuse and neglect. There is no racial, social, or economic class that is immune to child sexual abuse. Child abuse not only directly harms children, but also affects the entire family system. Free specialized services are provided to the community including forensic interviews, counseling, forensic evaluations, information and referrals, community awareness and education, as well as support and advocacy for victims of child abuse. The James M. Berry Center for Children plays a critical role in the lives of children who are victims of physical and/or sexual abuse or witnesses to a violent crime. The James M. Berry Center for Children assists children in feeling comfortable by providing a safe, home-like environment for them to provide information about their abuse. The James M. Berry Center for Children, Inc. works collaboratively with all law enforcement jurisdictions, the Department of Human Resources, and the District Attorney's Office to provide a multidisciplinary response to investigations and intervention of child physical and sexual abuse. Therefore, I, Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the city of Gadsden, on behalf of the Alabama Network of Children's Advocacy Centers, hereby proclaim April 9th through the 13th, 2012, as the James M. Berry Center for Children Week and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to protect children and support the intervention efforts provided by the James M. Berry Center for Children. She made me look good in the last picture I have.
Thank you. Like you said, my name is Patricia Falcon, and I want to thank Mayor Guyton and the city council for this recognition today for the Berry Center. As the executive director, I hope to bring awareness and highlight the services that our agency provides for this community. I'm really pleased to tell you that we're the only nonprofit in this community that actually has a direct impact on criminal activity and whether or not criminals are on the street with my children and your children. And so that's one of the things that are always, that's always tender to my heart. I would like to recognize my staff that's here today and ask them that they'll stand, certainly not as large as the Quality of Life, but we've interacted. We've had some great referrals and resources with Quality of Life and are real pleased and happy to work with them as well. And then I have a couple of board members that are here and I'd ask that they stand as well because they're critical to our services in making sure that we have the awareness in the community. And I see Detective Hammond's over here as well. We work real closely with Gadsden Police Officer, and he's one of our great investigators and works as a part of our multidisciplinary team. It's real important that you know that we do work as a part of a team. We could not do this work, there's only three full-time staff members at the Berry Center, so we certainly could not do this work alone. And it's critical that we have the support of our multidisciplinary team, and that does include law enforcement, the District Attorney's Office, DHR, and our medical providers. I'd like to highlight for you, and we have some goodies for you up here, and you'll all see that hopefully you all got a pinwheel when you came in. The pinwheel really is a representation for us of the services that we provide in reminding people that blue is the universal color for child abuse and that we want to think about the free spirit that children feel and should feel. And certainly, we realize that the reality is that children are abused and neglected every day, and here in this community, about 87% of the allegations that we investigate involve sexual abuse. Last year, we interviewed 317 children and a few adults as well, and that's one of the services that we provide, is making sure that adults that might have a diminished mental capacity have that resource available to go to be interviewed when there's any kind of allegation of sexual abuse for them. So if you're reading in the newspaper, any of the cases that we've seen over the last year, I've had so many people say, "My goodness, your work is incredible. You're in the newspaper every single week." And many thanks to Lisa for sharing that information with you. And it's critical that people understand the role that we play here in the community. As I said, we have had about a 20% increase in interviews over the year. So I thank you for the opportunity to be here today and to have this recognition, Mayor, for the Berry Center. One of the things that I do want to highlight is that about 29% of the children that we've interviewed have been from the Gadsden area. And so, you know, certainly Gadsden has the highest percentage of children across the county, but we do serve the entire county. All of our services are free to children and families, and then they're provided as well with counseling, free for them after they initially come in for their interview. I do want to just share with you, next Tuesday, we will be having our pinwheel ceremony, so you'll see these. At the courthouse, we'll have Judge Milliken speaking, and that'll be next Tuesday at 11 o'clock in front of the courthouse. I realize it's right in the middle of the city council meeting, but that's just one way that we do the recognition for the number of children that we've interviewed, that 317 children. And then we'll be providing activities throughout the week and then culminating the week with a golf tournament, so that information is in your packet as well, and we'd love for you to be there and participate with us in our golf tournament that's going to be on April 14th. There'll be that morning and plenty of time for everybody to get to Smoke on the Falls after that, so certainly we'd love to have you be able to come out and share that day with us as well.
How about going into a little more detail of exactly what you do over there?
I'd be happy to.
In interviewing and how you interview and who all is there and so forth.
Yes, sir. When a child comes, when a child makes any kind of allegation of abuse, typically what happened many years ago is that a child might tell a teacher or someone like that, and then they'd have to go and maybe go talk to the principal, and they'd have to go talk to DHR, and they'd have to go talk to the police officer, and those would be done at the different offices. The intention behind the Berry Center is that we have one location, we are in a city-owned building that we rent from the city, and they have one space that they can come, that's a child-friendly home for them. We're located on East Chestnut Street, and when they come in, we really want the intent for them to be comfortable and welcome. They have snacks, and it's kind of sitting in your living room, basically, is what it feels like for them. When they're first there for their interview, their forensic interview, the family will come back, the non-offending family member, and talk with our staff. At the same time, our law enforcement officers and DHR representative that works with that family will be there as well. But that child only speaks to one person. All three of our staff members are trained as forensic interviewers, and it's a really specialized, highly skilled kind of training. And so they'll come in afterward, we've talked with the family member, the child will go in the interview room, which is really comfortable for them. We've got a table and they can color and things like that for young children, and it's just comfortable for our older kids as well, and talk with just that one person. We use closed-circuit TV, so all of the interviews are recorded on DVD, and then that information is given over to the District Attorney's Office and law enforcement as evidence. It's collected as evidence, and so those are able to be used later in trial.
The child, really, doesn't have to go to trial anymore, they can use that?
There are occasional times, Carol Griffiths is on our board, and she's the deputy district attorney here, and she prosecutes the majority of our child sex abuse cases here in the community, but occasionally, she does have children that do need to testify, but there's a lot of preparation and work that we're able to do with them, and she's able to do with them in getting them ready to be able to go testify. The intention is that they don't have to go to those multiple places to tell their story of the most traumatic kinds of things that have happened to them. And I think that's the part that I certainly want to share with everyone today, is that we, the number of children for this community is tremendous, and certainly, we know that it's just a handful, that we're not reaching all of the children that actually have been being abused.
Do you have a child counselor and a family counselor?
We have a child counselor, Cara Brooks here, it works also with our families, the families will come in. If there is extended family needs, we're able to make those referrals. Quality of Life actually is one of those referral resources for us, and, you know, we're able to refer our families to them as well if need be. So typically, our children come in for short-term counseling, on average, you know, usually six months or so or less than that. And then if, as they develop, then they're able to come back in. Once you've been interviewed at the Berry Center, you can always come back in for services, and all of our services are provided free in the community. We're also available to speak at any kind of community group or church organization, civic organization, on any kind of topic related to protecting children. And so that, you know, as I mentioned, that's really one of the things that's real tender to our hearts, is making sure that as a community, that we understand how important it is that children are protected.
May I ask?
Yes, sir.
With a 20% increase in interviews, how much of that is attributed to more child abuse cases actually being presented, or more cases actually being, well, let me rephrase that, more, there are more, there are more child abuse, there is more child abuse, and then there are those people who are coming forward, who perhaps had not come forward in the past, to report these incidents of child abuse? So how do you break that down with a 20% increase, new people are just coming forward now like they have never done in the past?
I think that's a great question. Nationally, our statistics show us that there are less reports of child abuse, interestingly enough. About one out of every four girls and one out of every seven boys will be sexually assaulted in some way before the age of 18. And so, given that information, we know with our children here that about 87% of those are allegations of sexual abuse. We certainly do interviews for children when there's physical abuse cases, and you'll probably read many of those in the newspaper, that will tend to be our very severe physical abuse that, you know, where you outwardly be able to see the signs of those, as well as, you know, we all know that we've had some child deaths here in the community from physical abuse. So, you know, nationally, while they say those numbers are going down, we're seeing an increase here in this community. Many people have asked me, "Is that attributed to drug activity? What is, what's the reason for that?" And actually, we're trying to do some of our own, you know, research and gathering that information, just to try to determine what that cause is for Etowah County.
Very good.
That's a great question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. Oh, yes, absolutely. I'd like to get, share with y'all our contact information. If parents have any kind of question, or if a community member would be interested in having the Berry Center staff go and speak with you, your civic group go in to speak with a youth group, we're available to speak in schools and do presentations in the schools. Our contact information is (256) 543-1319. And I'll give you that number again, (256) 543-1319. And you can call us anytime to make those arrangements. Also, we have, in fact, I had a question last night, I had a parent call me about 7:00 last night. She had something happen with her grandson at a daycare center here, and she called the Berry Center. And so I took that information, and then we've called DHR, and we've talked with them this morning. I talked with our investigator last night about it. It actually had been a child that we were familiar with. So occasionally, we will have parents that will call the Berry Center, but certainly they can call DHR at any time as well, and that number's (256) 549-4100. What I ask is that, as a community, that we all recognize that children are abused and neglected every day, and it's not something that we can say, "Oh, this impacts other children," because ultimately, it impacts my children and your children and grandchildren and all of the people that we interact with every day. And so if you suspect any kind of child abuse, the most important thing that you can do is speak up for that child and make that report. And so I ask that you do that in efforts to protect all of our children and keeping them safe. So thank you for the recognition for the Berry Center. I would love to have y'all come by and take a tour of our center, and look forward to that opportunity. And thank you to the city of Gadsden and to the council members for the support that I know that you've given us through the years. So anytime you have any kind of questions or you'd like to take a tour, I'd love to have you come by. Thank you.
I just want to say, I know what Bob's thinking too. It's amazing to me, there's more people having kids and less people taking care of them now than ever before. It just amazes me every time I read something, and this is such a great service that we have here in this city. And anybody that needs to have some questions or that you might want to find out some information, Ms. Falcon and her staff would be the ones to call. Thank you.
A is an ordinance amending City Code Section 2, Day 253 regarding the Gadsden Museum of Arts and History. This ordinance was presented last week for the first week. Changes of the name, size, eligibility, and selection process for members and ends the terms of all existing board members. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
B is a resolution. Take the vote.
Yeah, we did, we did.
Well, I took it.
They're gonna do it at the end. B is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1419 Jackson Avenue in District 5, owned by Jack D. Clay, Sr., and wife, Marjorie N. Clay. This resolution was tabled 30 days ago on March 6th. What is the pressure of the council?
Mr. President, on the advice from the Building Department, I'd like to ask for another 30-day table on this.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
10, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution authorizing annulment of an unopened street right of way known as Waring Avenue. The owners of the abutting property have requested the annulment and the utility companies have been notified. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Will please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the city clerk.
My name is John Thrash, Sr. I live at 231 Truman Street, and I'm the one who wants that road closed. What happened is, this man has come around in our neighborhoods, and he's building these little old shanty houses, they like two foot long, and we really don't appreciate it, because what he's doing is lowering the value of our property. He doesn't live there, he just coming in, and it's just a mess. And I would appreciate if y'all just tell him to stop doing it in our community, take it to his own community. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it?
My name is Fanny Thrash. I'm John Thrash's wife. I just wanted to say that I want this road annulled because I have grandkids. We own both sides of the property. I don't want my grandkids to have to cross the street to get to their swing set. Property that we own, we always have our family reunions, our family gatherings there after church on Sundays or whatever. I don't want my kids to have to cross the street to get to their swing set.
Thank you, Mayor. See any other? The Chair will entertain a motion to...
Got one more.
My name is John Brooks, and I'm a property owner on Truman Street, and my complaint is that he, the man that's building these houses, came into the neighborhood unannounced and started building these little houses, the two wonders to the house, and depreciating the property of my value, of my property, the value of my property. And I just didn't appreciate him coming in like he did, unannounced, which he could've said some, or probably could've gave us some kind of announcement that we could've sit and discussed it. No one knew, it just started. So that's my complaint, my property value.
Is it not zoned?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any...
Got one more.
My name's David Hawkins. I live at 2809 Truman Street, across the street from the Thrashes. I've been living in that neighborhood most of my life, I'm 43 years old. I've never known that road to be open, and when it was open, it was gravel road and it was only 20 feet long. And I'm building on a house, adding to a house in that same neighborhood, right in front of where that road's being built. And they didn't want to let me borrow money because of the neighborhood. They said, "Oh, we built for the neighborhood." Now they're bringing in smaller homes, and it's decreasing the property value, and I'm getting ready to refinance myself. And I don't want that road right there in front of my bedroom window. And I just wanted to make my statement.
You want the road to know, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I'm Myra Hawkins. I live at 2809 Truman Street. David is my husband, and like he stated, we live right across the street from the Thrashes. And I don't know if y'all understand, but what the Thrashes are saying is, they own both of those lots. He's wanting to put a road right through their property so that their driveway going into their house is a driveway for all of that traffic, for all those little houses to come out, right in my bedroom window. He wouldn't want that in his neighborhood, and it would never happen in his neighborhood, and he wouldn't put those little houses in his neighborhood to depreciate, depreciate his value. We want ours to stay, and we want our community to stay like it is, we live on a deadened road, this peaceful and quiet, and that's why we want it to stay.
Who is she?
She wants to know.
Everybody wants to know.
Okay, everybody wants to know.
Yeah.
Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
What this is, Mr. President, I've talked with these people at length, right here on this right here, and that road dutton, come all the way down through there, and it's not open, and they just want this right here, this part here, annulled where nothing can be, come through that way by the church down here, through their property down there.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. They want to go back to my... Huh?
You want to go back to the special present?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, let's go.
Who's gonna do it?
The family.
The family's here.
Yeah, the family.
Okay. Especially, we have a special presentation, this is number eight, a portrait of the former Mayor Les Gillen for City Hall at this time. I'll ask Pat Harden to come forward.
I knew it from my, from my mom, but my granddad was mayor from 1962 to 1974. Most of our family here, he's got two daughters and three grandkids, eight great-grandkids. And I've talked to Judge Jenkins and Merrigan for a while about getting this done, about getting my granddaddy's picture up here. So we're awful thankful for allowing us to put the picture up there. I think it's a long time coming. He cared about this community deeply and the people in the community. So I appreciate it, and we've got this portrait that we've had hung at his house for many years.
Okay, why don't, Kay, why don't you get the family to stand up? I see Pam and some of them back there. Yeah. That's great.
Thank you. I'm not sure why it's, hadn't been up before, but I'll leave that alone.
Well, you know, I've sort of got the, actually, I've got the talking, you know, here, I guess, several months ago, wasn't it, about some of that, I think, one of the sisters or daughters, not sure which one, but anyway, you need to have them all up there. If you're gonna have a few, might as well, I think you should have them all up there, especially somebody that made an impact like he did for twelve years.
They're being nice.
That's right.
I don't be nice. I just tell the truth. And it should've been up here a long time ago.
Absolutely.
Ends the conversation.
Okay, our next public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license to Cooper LLC doing businesses, Discount Food Mart in 224, number 2417, U.N. Avenue in District 2. This is retail beer and table wine license, off privileges only. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would like to say that we look at these very seriously. We don't just willy-nilly approve these applications for alcohol. The building department looks into it, the fire department looks into the building, the police department does a background check, so we don't, we look at this pretty, pretty seriously when we issue one of these, so it's not just willy-nilly.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is a resolution authorizing agreement with fiddleheads. This is for performance at the Smoke on the Falls event to be held on April the 13th. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I have, excuse me, I have a resolution that I would like to ask for unanimous consent, consent to consider today. It's a resolution rejecting bid number 3198, authorizing negotiations from the fire department.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any?
Mr. President, I have, excuse me, I have a resolution that I would like to ask for unanimous consent, consent to consider today. It's a resolution rejecting bid number 3198, authorizing negotiations from the fire department.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
It's a, it's a bid that was rejected, well, we didn't get any bids on an item that the chief wanted to have bid out, so he's gonna go back and negotiate the last bid that we had last year.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have three items I'd like to bring up at this time, and I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider all three, and then we'll get into discussions.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider all three items today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, the first one is ordinance authorizing voluntary retirement incentive program. As you know, we've talked about this and talked about this, and several cities around the state have gone into this program to have an incentive program. So at this time, we're gonna start the process. We had the company upstairs talking to us. Once we start this today, I think they are looking at probably about a sixty-day window where employees will be able to take advantage of this retirement plan. Can't explain it here today, but once we do this, then they will come back and meet with those groups of individuals who qualify for the retirement, and then go into detail with them as to what this incentive plan is all about. So I'd ask for passage of the incentive program plan.
Second.
Any discussion? You want any discussion?
I really disgusted.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, the next one is an ordinance amending fiscal year budget to appropriate a million dollars from unassigned general fund balance to a fund expense for voluntary retirement incentive plan.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, the third one is an ordinance, again, regarding insurance premium rates for retirees. I'd ask for passage of this.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, let me say that now that we've done all of these, what this is basically, we've talked about it here for a number of months and probably for several years, let me go back. Right now, our liability in this city is about $110 million, and this is just a step to start reducing that unfunded liabilities and the other liabilities that we have here in this city to prevent us from becoming cities like, give me a city that's just filed bankrupt, I can't remember. Pritchett, yeah, everybody says Pritchett, I don't like to use Pritchett, but anyway, other cities around this country who've gone bankrupt because of the fact that employees' costs have just gotten out of hand when you start talking about insurance, retirement, and the whole nine yards. And we're just trying to get ahead of the curve as opposed to waiting till we get to that point where we're in. So this is just a first step in that process, and hopefully, we'll have some good news for the public once we go through this process.
We promised back during budget time when we were faced with a general fund budget that was a, that represented seventy-two percent of that budget being personnel-related expenses. So we pledged back then, when we were entertaining the whole, the whole prospect of taking on the two percent that was passed on to cities by the state, we indicated then that that wouldn't be the last time that we would take steps to reduce that seventy-two percent. So this is just another example of the city being what I consider to be fiscally responsible in terms of us getting a lot healthier from a budgetary standpoint. So this is, and I think the thing you have to highlight when you talk about these programs is that they're, one, voluntary, and, two, the incentive gives the city an opportunity to hit a budgetary target. So this is definitely a good thing, and there will be ample opportunity for those who are interested in it to find out information both within City Hall and outside of City Hall if they so choose to.
I just want to piggyback on what Derek said. It is a voluntary retirement, nobody is being forced out, but we've had a lot of people in the last year or so that have asked about that since they've seen a lot of other cities around the state in the United States actually that's offered programs like this, so we're gonna see what happens on this. Thank you.
Any other new business?
Let me say this, don't let that hundred and ten million dollars scare you too bad. It's, for years, businesses, companies had to have the reserve to cover their retirees and all their, their potential expenses in retirees. And a few years ago, the federal government said, okay, cities, you're gonna have to do the same thing. So that hundred and ten million dollars would cover all retirees, all our obligations to present employees throughout and out, so it's, it's not something to get too worked up about, but it's something we need to bring down because we have to carry that on our books now. If you go to the bond market, and they'll, they'll show that liability.
I was just gonna say, Bill, you're right. It's been there all along. The thing now is, this new gasping rule says you gotta show it. We've been had this, this burden on our shoulders for years, ever since I've been here, and I've been here twenty-some years, it's been here. It's just that now you gotta show it on your book, so you gotta talk about it. Before, you didn't have to talk about it. So you're right, it's been here for a long time.
And I really wish Lisa were here so she could nod her head and kind of speak to it, but it impacts our ability to leverage debt for any kind of economic development activity. So for those of us who really feel that it's the city's job to drive economic and commercial development, having that debt kind of lingering over your head impacts your ability to leverage debt to do any of that. So again, that's why we're working very hard to get healthy from a financial standpoint.
Any other new business? Department reports, committees came on first Friday.
Thank you, President, Council, Mayor. You know, we got rained out last month, March, we had actually intended to kick everything back off again with a downtown Gadsin Gifts Back campaign to, so we could help some of the other nonprofit agencies, and so this, we've decided we're gonna do it this month. Now, the weatherman is promising good weather. I think about, you know, but you know, we don't believe that, but we think if it's right, about seventy-five degrees, nice, maybe a little clouds, but they say zero chance of rain right now, so that's what I'm hoping for. We're gonna have several, several nonprofit agencies set up in front in the, in the 600 block down near the Pittman Theater in front of BBVA Compass, the federal building in that direction, and just let them kind of educate people as to what they do. Patricia's done a great job talking about the Berry Center today, and, but we've asked them, don't just come and hand out papers, educate people, let them know what you do. So that's, that's one big thing that we're gonna do this time, it'll be in the 600 block, so we're hoping and praying for good weather for that. The hours this month, we would normally go from six to nine, but it's still, it's dark a little bit after seven, so our hours for first Friday, five o'clock to eight o'clock. We'll go to six to nine in May, but five o'clock to eight o'clock, we'll shut Broad Street down from First all the way to Seventh about 3:30. The food vendors will come rolling into the 400 block. We'll have entertainment, Ed Howard, who's a local attorney, will be at Third and Broad. The Matt Harvey Band will be in front of BB&amp;T, and Valley Road will be in front of the Center for Cultural Arts at Fifth and Broad. So we're just gonna have a great time. You know, I just want to remind everybody that First Friday started off six and a half, well over six years ago now, as, as something to bring people downtown, and that's what we're still about. We're, we're very appreciative of, of the classic cars that come and bring a big crowd. First Friday's about our downtown merchants, about encouraging people to shop local, and my new, I guess my new word this year is locavore, to be a locavore, to shop local, to eat local, to drink local, to think local, to do everything local. So that's what, that's what we want to do. Please remember that that's, that's what First Friday's all about. So have Broad Street closed, it'll be a great time. Family-friendly, fun event, thanks to the Gadsin Police Department, the Etowah County Sheriff's Deputy Reserves, public works cleans up afterwards, so you'd never know there was even anything going on. So First Friday is, is just a great thing. Our website gives you more information, www.downtowngadsin.com, so check it out and come to see us. We'll be ready for a good time Friday night, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay. Any other department reports? Remarks by the mayor and the council? Mayor, you want to start?
I'd just like to say we appreciate the good crowd here today and also the Gillen family for bringing that portrait to us, and we'll get it up out here with the, with the other mayors, it's served here before, and we appreciate y'all and everything that your dad, granddad, and great-granddad did when he was mayor of our city. So actually, I have a picture with him when I was coaching a girls' softball team in 1963, warm-up floor company. My mother was a player on that team, but anyway, that we took up in City Hall, I think this building was pretty new then too, so, but thank y'all.
Mayor, what year was that, what year was that again?
1963, I was six.
Plus, the building had air conditioning too.
Yeah, yeah, if you come back maybe next week, definitely by the week after that, we will have, we had to put a new cooler in out here, so we're working on it.
Well, I was sure gonna ask Chad, when was he gonna have that project completed? Being a family man and having the, the real task, you know, and the pleasure of, of assisting my wife and raising three children, it gives me great pleasure to, to recognize and for the Berry Center to be here located in our city. You know, listen, to, to me, and maybe I'm out of line, but to me, there's nothing worse that an adult or a person can do on this earth than to abuse a child. So we have a wonderful organization here in the city, and every time, I mean, weekly, you pick your paper up, you know, and you'll see where some case has gone through there. The Berry Center's interviewed people, and they've assisted the Department of Human Resources and the, and the local facilities, local police now, to put somebody in a situation where they need to be, and that's behind bars when you, when you do harm to our children. I just, I just want to thank the Berry Center for being here, and we appreciate you. And on the other, and the next thing I would like to say is, we had a, during pre-council this morning, we had a citizen to come forward and, and express her concern about an incident that had occurred last month during, during an accident. And she was very much received, she was very well-received. We have now gotten, like I said, you know, some communications, snafus may have been there, but the chief of police, the chief of police has stepped in, you know, to make sure that this situation is remedied and that we should not have situations like that to occur in the city. So I encourage you that whenever, you, you, we don't have that closed-door mentality anymore in our police department. So when you have a situation that you need to report about anything, the chief is there, and, and don't, don't hesitate to pick up your phone and call and ask for the chief. Don't, don't, and if you, if he, if he doesn't, if he isn't... So, when you have a situation that you need to report about anything, the chief is there and, and don't, don't hesitate to pick up your phone and call and ask for the chief. Don't, and if you, if he, if he doesn't, if he isn't the one that you need to speak to, I assure you, they will direct you to someone else that will. And he's busy making sure that people understand that. You got to have some, in any situation, you have to use some people's skills whenever you're performing your task. I don't care what it is, policeman, fireman, mayor, you know, council, you must have people's skills and they must be good skills if you're going to do your job and do it properly. So, I applaud, we'll just call, I applaud Mayor for coming forward this morning. And the weather's beautiful, going to get a little rain, but as, as an old friend of mine says, if you have a chance, go fishing. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things. The funeral for Mr. Boogie McCain is going to be today, the funeral, I'm sorry, it's going to be Thursday, Thursday at 2:00 PM, my apologies. So, do encourage those of us who can, it's at Convention Hall, those of us who can to go out and, and attend that in memory of a, a great personality from the city of Gaston, an international personality that, that has an origin here in Gaston. So, one of many great things we have from this city. Again, do want to echo the sentiment about the Berry Center. You guys do an awesome job and you represent the city well, you serve as a model for, for many of the similar programs in the state. And likewise, Quality of Life, I was at an event just two weeks ago and got, received a number of inquiries relative to the mobile unit that they'll be installing in the Gaston City School System. There are several cities who are very, who are very, very interested in that. And of course, with them having such a, a large footprint over the state, they are very well-recognized in terms of the programs that they offer throughout the state. So, and their, their corporate headquarters is right here in City of Gaston. So, that, again, that's just something we ought to be mindful of. And the last thing I, I just want to hit, hit on and I don't want to kind of beat this dead horse too much, but again, do want it to be noted, you know, once again, that the incentive, voluntary incentive that's been presented is one of a number of steps that you're going to be seeing here over the next few months and, and even on into next year in terms of us trying to get to the point of get, getting the, the budget more in line with where it needs to be. Again, I can't move away too quickly from that 72% number that we all saw as we were going through the budget process. That is, that's significant and it, and it had the city out of line with where we needed to be in terms of personnel expenses. You know, and of course, you always have to remember there are people there on the other side of that number. But, but even with that said, there are ways to get where you need to be in terms of the budget. So, stay tuned. Want to applaud the mayor and Lisa and those who've worked diligently to get us where we need to be in terms of our budget.
I think most of things have been said as far as that process. And again, like Derrick said, in the next couple of months, hopefully, we will have a, our arms around the number of people who are going to accept a volunteer retirement program and some other things here. We just, we just got to do what's best for the city. And I will take the blame for some of that $110,000 because I was one of those guys who felt like that employees shouldn't have to absorb the cost of health care when the city had all that money. And of course, I would vote to city to pass it on and take it up instead of passing it on to the employees. But it's come a time in, in, in our history and in this country where we, we've got to, to do a better job when it comes down to spending and governing the process. With the health care costs going out of whatever, it's out of, out of this world, out of this whatever, we've got to do something to, to bring that cost back under control. And so, I'm, I'm very much supportive of the programs that we're going to be instituting over the next few months here to, to get our budget and to get our financial house in order. Again, I'm happy to see this portrait here after so many years. Like I say, some people try to be nice and they won't, don't want to tell the story, but I like to tell the truth and that portrait should have been here years ago. And for whatever reason, some folk didn't want it here, but I'm glad with that we, the family saw fit to put it here today. And we, again, appreciate you and, and we're glad that, that process and that problem is gone. That's all I have.
I'd like briefly mention the Berry Center. We appreciate what y'all do. It takes a very special people to handle the problems that y'all handle. And just let you know, the council's always behind you and will support you any way we can. And what a success story, what Wayne Rowe has built over the past 30 years. It's amazing what his, what he has accomplished, going from a small beginning that he had to over 300 employees and actually an empire he's built and it's amazing. So, he's certainly be committed to that. I would like to announce that we're going to have a neighborhood meeting tonight at the library, the Lena Martin Room. Everybody in District Five is certainly welcome, but this is a neighborhood watch group that's going to meet. That's 5:00 at the library, Lena Martin Room. Thank you.
Johnny?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to hold all my comments to next Tuesday. If my mother was still here, she would really get on to me saying all these people out here at 90 degrees in this little room right here fanning. So, I don't have anything else to say, but hey, when it's over with, y'all go get cooled.
This is Johnny's birthday, he trying to, he trying to get out here to go to a party. How old are you today, Johnny?
28, I believe.
Okay, all right. Well, happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Since there's some lying going on, Johnny, you should have brought some church fans that said Councilman Cannon, District Six.
Shut up.